Twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting, time being six P M. I call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is pledge allegiance. Please rise. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to let the general public know that Mr. Robert King will be recording this evening along with town staff the, the meeting. The board is in receipt of some selectman meeting minutes that we did not have reasonable knowledge of prior to posting for the agenda this evening. So, we're just gonna run through and approve those meeting minutes. The meetings are the opening portion of December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. I make a motion to approve the minutes as written for December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two as written, I think.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes. That is three in affirmative, two absent. Those minutes are passed as written, approved as written. Next item on our agenda is another open meeting law complaint from Casey Fleming of fifty-nine Quobahg Avenue, Oxford, Massachusetts, dated February fifth, two thousand twenty-two. The purpose of this item on the agenda is to acknowledge receipt of and review the complaint. Selectmen, have you had the opportunity to review Mr. Fleming's complaint?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that the board vote to authorize Town Council to respond to the opening, open meeting law complaint submitted by Casey Fleming of fifty-nine Quobahg Ave. On February fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and to provide a copy of the response to the board.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That is three in affirmative, two absent. Town Council will respond to Mr. Fleming on that matter. Next item on the agenda, Treasurer Collector Jillian Connor is going to be joining us up here for short-term borrowing renewal.
Good evening Chairman and members of the board.
Good evening.
Normally, I'm here before you with a packet of paperwork for you to sign. This year, we're doing it a little bit different, differently because the state does have some different changes in requirements for the short-term borrowing. It has to be uploaded five days before the actual issuance of the borrowing, which this meeting, our borrowing is due on the March eleventh, and our bids are being taken next week, and March eighth would be, the next meeting would be too late for you to sign the documents. So, I'm just here before you to ask that you can approve signing the documents when we do have them available, which would be next Thursday. There will be at least a week available of time for everybody to come in and sign them, and I believe Dee will have them in the office for you to sign. We don't have an interest rate yet set, which I will have for, on the documents that you will be signing. That would be the only unknown, that I don't have the for you tonight.
Okay. Board members, any questions? I make a motion that the board approve the short-term borrowing bond renewal.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
And I vote yes. That's three affirmative, two absent. Board is approved, and we will begin starting next week, correct?
Yes, next Thursday is when the documents will be available. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by the D P W Director Jared Duval in Nish Engineering on complete and shared streets prioritization plan. Jared, if you'd like to join us. And you're joined by.
John Mitchellak of Nish Engineering and Kevin Ross.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys wanna come up now, or I'll just do, say a couple of words.
Can you introduce us?
Sure, yeah, no problem. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Thank you for having us. So, we're here tonight just to provide a brief update, a brief presentation on the D P W's Complete Streets project effort. So, just a little background, the state's Complete Streets program, it's been in effect for several years now, the goal of which is to allow or help communities advance complete streets development within communities. A complete street is one that accommodates all modes of transportation, so not just motorists, but pedestrians, cyclists, transit, et cetera. There's a process that needs to be undertaken for a community to qualify for what is called tier-three funding. So, there's three tiers to the program. The first tier is training for key staff that will be submitting project requests or project applications for complete streets funding, and then enacting a policy, a town-wide policy that says the town is committed to considering multimodal design elements as part of our project development. The town of Oxford passed their Complete Streets policy in July of two thousand sixteen, which made us eligible for tier-three funding at that point. Shortly after, I should backtrack a little bit, there's a second tier is developing a prioritization plan of projects that we would seek funding for under tier-three. So, again, the policy passed in July, two thousand sixteen. Oxford applied for one, one project to date, and that was in April of two thousand seventeen. You may recall the Sutton Ave sidewalk extension project, and unfortunately, it was not approved. However, the legislator later earmarked some funding for that very project. But to date, Oxford's never officially received tier-three funding under the Complete Streets program. So, with that, our current Complete Streets prioritization plan was developed back in, you know, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen era. It's outdated. Many of the projects that were listed as high priority have since been completed with either local roadway rehabilitation funding or chapter ninety funding because there were other needs, not just complete street elements to those projects, but there were safety implications. Projects such as the Locust and Clover Street reconstruction adjacent to the Chaffey School, those projects needed to be done, you know, for safety surrounding a school zone. So, they've since been completed, and we now need to identify new projects that we could potentially seek funding for. So, with that, each community is entitled to a tier-two technical assistance grant to engage the services of a consultant to help in the development or updating of that prioritization plan. So, during the original project effort, we never, we did that all internally. So, we've never actually applied for that grant. So, so we did. We, we applied back in August of two thousand twenty-one, or shortly before, and in August of two thousand twenty-one, we were awarded a near thirty-eight thousand dollar grant to undertake this, this planning effort. And after that, we engaged the services of Nish Engineering to help us through the process, and we've been working diligently ever since to update this prioritization plan, and that's, you know, the basis of our presentation tonight. So, with that, I'll turn it over to John Mitchellak and Kevin Ross of Nish Engineering.
Great, thanks Jared, and I wanna thank the board for having us here this evening. As Jared said, my name is John Mitchellak. I'm the Deputy Director of the Transportation Department at Nish Engineering, and with me this evening is Kevin Ross, a senior designer in the Transportation Department. Some of this follows up on what, what Jared had said, but the Complete Streets program is a fifty million dollar competitive grant program that municipalities can apply for. It provides up to four hundred thousand dollars for complete streets projects. That can be spread out over a four-year period or awarded in a single year. As Jared mentioned, there's, you can get up to thirty-eight thousand dollars for funding assistance with the tier-two prioritization plan, which is what we're here to talk about this evening. State-owned roadways aren't eligible for complete streets funding, and roadway maintenance and resurfacing projects aren't eligible specifically, but sometimes you can work in complete street elements with some of your planned road maintenance if there's a paving project. So, that's something that you can supplement funds as long as you're improving any of the complete streets elements. As Jared mentioned, there's three tiers. The first tier was the policy that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen in July of two thousand sixteen. You had an original prioritization plan that was approved in January of two thousand seventeen by Mast dot, which then made you eligible for tier-three funding. And as Jared mentioned, your Sutton, Sutton Ave sidewalk project was not approved under that funding period. So, we're here today to update your prioritization plan, and in doing that, we wanted to focus on some of the goals for the town, and we worked with Jared and discussed what, you know, how we can get the most, most impact for the money available. And we've set two goals. One was to expand the pedestrian network. We wanted to improve accessibility, especially around school areas or areas where people would frequent. And the second goal was to expand that pedestrian network in the downtown area and try to connect some of the gaps that exist in the sidewalk network today. And you can see on the, the sketch on the right, you know, an example of one of those gaps. You've got sidewalks that are shown in yellow on Main Street, Maple Road, and Charlton Street, and you can see along Fremont Street that there's missing sidewalk there. So, that, that may be a potential for an important project to complete that gap by connecting the sidewalks. So, we looked at areas that were around libraries or community centers, schools, churches, things like that, where we wanted to improve that pedestrian connectivity and accessibility. So, as we did that, we, we reviewed some of the past reports that had been done, studies, plans, that of projects that had already been undertaken within town, and we looked for areas for potential projects. We then went out and visited each of these areas and got familiar with the, the issues that they would present, the feasibility of creating pedestrian network connectivity, accessibility, the areas that they would connect to. And then what we did is we, we developed a series of metrics so that we could rank these projects based on, you know, the proximity to these areas, the right-of-way issues, whether there's any physical features that would make it more difficult or more costly to construct these projects. And we developed a scoring system, and we worked with D P W and, and modified the scoring system so that it was taking into account these various criteria. And then what we did is we ended up coming up with forty-eight potential projects that we ended up ranking throughout, throughout the town that we thought would meet the Complete Streets goals and possibly be approved for funding by the state. And in doing that, we, what we did was we ranked them, and we identified the top five projects that we're gonna talk to you about tonight, which we think, you know, you're gonna get the most impact in connecting those pedestrian sidewalk and the gaps that are, that have been created. You can see on the, on the top, the photo, an example of what's been recently done on Locust Street. So, that's similar to what we think can be done on all five of these streets where the, the roadway can be repaved and a sidewalk and a new curb can be created on one side of the road providing a safe and accessible access. And below, that's a typical section or rendering showing what these improvements could look like within that existing roadway footprint. Now, the five projects that we've identified are Sigourney Street, Church Street, Fremont Street, Pine Street, and Fairlon Ave. And we think that adding sidewalks to these streets would be most beneficial, and they receive the highest rank out of our projects. And I'll turn it over to Kevin. He can talk a little bit about each of these projects and why we think they're important.
Thanks, John. So, the project that came in first in our ranking was Sigourney Street, which is a couple hundred feet from here. And one of the reasons it came in so high was that its proximity to so many key locations, including Town Hall, the library, the senior center, and the community center. It's also within a mile of the Chaffey School, which is a criteria that Mast dot uses in selecting projects. And so, this would be about five hundred feet of sidewalk with a curb, and it would probably come in around seventy thousand dollars, and it would connect Main Street to Fremont Street. The second project that we identified was Church Street, and this would be from Main Street to the end of Church Street, which is a cul-de-sac, about three thousand feet of sidewalk and curb. We would also include, as you can see here in this thing, a crossing at the Treasure Land Playground, which is one of the key reasons why this project ranks so highly, because there's currently no pedestrian facilities to access the playground. So, we allow for accessibility to the playground as well as a safe crossing. And we have a rendering of what this sidewalk and crossing might look like. And this would be, there's also an option to only construct the sidewalk to the playground to save costs, but it would come in around three hundred and forty thousand to do the whole street. The third project would be Fremont Street. This would be from Charlton Street to Maple Ave. This would be a good project to do in conjunction with Sigourney Street because that would, you know, close off a whole network gap to the two of them together. And we made a rendering of what the intersection between Fremont and Sigourney would look like here. Fremont would be about eleven hundred feet of sidewalk and would come in around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's, because of its proximity to Sigourney Street, its benefits are similar, its proximity to Town Hall, the library, and the senior center. The fourth project was Pine Street, and this would be from Charlton Street to Fairlon Ave. This came in very highly because it would provide north-south access towards the Chaffey School from Charlton Street, which there's currently no pedestrian facilities in that neighborhood. So, it'd allow students from the school to access downtown easier and safer, and similarly, the other direction. This would be about nineteen hundred feet, and I believe it came in around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then lastly, we have Fairlon Ave. Again, would be a good project to construct in conjunction with Pine Street because the two connect. But this Pine, Fairlon would be, the construction would be from Main Street to Cypress Street. It's roughly twenty-two hundred feet of sidewalk and curb, and it would connect to the Locust Street project that John showed earlier. This one would probably come in around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars by our estimate.
Great, thanks Kevin. So, the next steps, now that we've identified, you know, we have this list we've developed of forty-eight potential projects that we would submit to Mast DOT for the updated prioritization plan. We'd like to, we wanna submit that by the end of the month. That gives Mast dot an opportunity to comment on the prioritization plan and get comments back to us in the town in March. And if there's any revisions that are made, we have an opportunity to make any revisions or updates or answer any of the questions so that it can get in and get approved in time. The other thing we wanted to mention is the Shared Streets Program. So, that's a separate grant, and Mast dot is focusing on projects that can help improve safety as well as calm traffic. And we actually think the Church Street sidewalk is a, is a perfect project to apply for that grant. So, that would be separate from the Complete Streets money. We think since there's, you know, there's a new possibility for a sidewalk and a connection to the Treasure Land Playground, that we think that that, that would score highly for the Shared Streets. So, we wanna submit that project under the Shared Streets Grant by the end of this month, and that way we'll find out if Mast dot would fund that project with a Shared Streets Grant, and then you wouldn't need to pursue funding for that particular project under your Complete Streets program funding. So, the, the prioritization plan, once that gets approved and by Mast dot, you can use that list then to request funding for specific projects that are on that approved list. So, even though we have these ranked, that doesn't mean that those are the projects that you have to submit for, but usually, they wanna see the projects that you've ranked high, highly. And as Kevin said, we've done some, some rough cost estimates so that you have an idea of which projects you could apply for, and those applications are due by the first of May. And once you get those applications in for funding, then Mast dot will approve them. And we've worked with communities that have submitted five projects, and Mast dot approved three of them. So, they can give you up to four hundred thousand dollars, but you don't necessarily always get four hundred thousand dollars. Another thing that's in your favor, and Jared had mentioned this, is that you haven't received any funding yet. We've worked with communities, they got funding, they built the projects, they asked for more money, and Mast dot told them, well, wait, we wanna make sure that towns that haven't received any funding get their opportunity. So, since you haven't received any, we're hopeful that, that you'll be looked at more favorably when they're allocating funding under the next round of the Complete Streets program. So, when we submit that by May, Mast dot usually makes announcements in, I think it's June or July in the summer. That's what the, the current administration has done. They announce all of the municipalities that are receiving grants, and that funding should be available by August. And that being said, we can work with the town, and if, if it's, if it's the desire to get these constructed this year, we can work with the town, develop whatever documents you need so that you can hire a contractor to go out and utilize any funds that you receive under the Complete Streets Grant. Since they are sidewalk jobs, you know, they, they probably won't involve, you know, too much plan work. We've chosen the, the top five projects because they, they look like they'll fit, they'll easy to, be easier to build, there's less impacts, and you can see from the renderings, there seems to be some, some right-of-way next to the existing roadway, so the sidewalks are, can be constructed easily when then, within that area. And then the last line is just, you know, you, you'll continue to update and review your prioritization plan. As I mentioned, you may want to move some projects up on the list to coincide with either utility work on roadways or paving projects that D P W has coming up. So, sometimes you can take advantage of the Complete Streets funds to fix your sidewalk or improve the safety of a crossing, or institute some other multimodal improvements, whether bicycles or transit users. So, those are the, the different types of projects, and, and then this just shows you the five projects and, you know, where they're located, and you can see why they're important. You know, they connect those gaps, they're near the, the Chaffey School, and around Town Hall, you know, several of them connect directly to Main Street, which'll, you know, provide some more access to Main Street and the destinations along Main Street. So, thank you, and.
Thank you.
Happy to answer questions.
Board members?
Just wanna confirm something. So, there's no land-taking, right? We have enough right-of-way to do this on all five streets?
We haven't done survey, but, you know, that's, that came, that was considered when we ranked the projects.
And what type of curbing is it gonna be? A paved, you know, hot top or granite or?
I think it depends per project. Did we assume between us?
We assumed asphalt, yeah, for cost reasons.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Those are my two questions. Very good. Oh, one quick thing. Jared, this is not in any way connected to the plan that's gonna come out in about three or four years about the, the Main Street, right? I'm assuming that's why we're not doing any of the sidewalks on Main Street, because we've walked Main Street before with Megan, I think, and, and people from the ADA, and there are issues with that. But I'm assuming the reason we're not doing that is that that's gonna be part of the design in several years when that project hits. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. This is sort of a separate planning effort. That's, that's why. Those, those projects would likely be ranked pretty highly if we knew that we weren't already addressing them.
Thank you.
Well, I just, earlier today, attended my monthly Central Mass Regional Planning Commission meeting, and one of the items that they brought up was called a micro project grant program. It's something new. They haven't even implemented. They're in the process of implementing. They're gonna be sending out, I guess, all the criteria, how you do this and stuff. And the micro projects they're talking about are sidewalks, bike lanes, culvert replacement, things like that. So, I don't know if, if this is something that would slide into this also, you know. And it's, it's, again, it's a new program they're, they're coming out with, so I just thought I'd kinda put that in your ear.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, that, I mean, certainly this planning effort, it could serve, you know, multiple purposes, right, for other programs, right? Because there's a lot of overlap, like John mentioned, the overlap between this and the Shared Streets program. So, having already done some assessments and analysis to, to get this prioritized plan, we, we know the projects we wanna address. So, now it's just about, you know, finding the funding and being creative with how we either, you know, with different grant programs or incorporating it into our pavement management program and subsidizing that with Complete Streets money. You know, we'll, we'll get creative with it, see how we can accomplish these as part of our roadway paving, you know, if need be.
Great. Very nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. You had mentioned the Shared Streets Grant for Church, the Church Street sidewalk. If, if we got approved for the Shared Street Grant for that, Church Street would fall off this list. Is there another street we were looking at to replace that, or would we just focus on those other four, four streets at that point?
In my opinion, it would bump up the, the priority of the other projects. You know, we looked at Shared Streets, given that the timeframe here to apply for that. A lot of times, and John, I know you could probably speak to this too, I mean, they're looking for quick-hit projects, right, easily implemented. Church Street is one that, you know, while Sigourney and Fremont are certainly high priority, I think everyone's aware of the condition of those streets as well. So, just to get the grant money to put a sidewalk in there, that's not very, wouldn't be very prudent. That's gonna be, need to be a part of a roadway rehabilitation project, maybe some drainage improvements, at least a Fremont Street. So, Church Street is a road that's in really, you know, good shape comparatively. So, that could be a project that we implement a sidewalk, and, you know, and that's sufficient for, for quite a while. So, you know, that's why we're looking at that one in particular for Shared Streets. And then again, once that came off, comes off the list, we can bump those other ones up in priority.
So, Jared, what you're saying, and I wanna understand, so if we, let's just say we, they're gonna do Sigourney Street. We would then look at paving the road at that time as well?
I think it'd be, you'd get economy of scale that way too, right? If we, that'd be the goal. That'd be my goal is to look at it. Yeah, certainly Fremont Street needs, and that's, that's on our list. It was on part of our more robust plan that obviously we had brought forth at town meeting, but it's still on our radar, obviously, just because of all the things that they had mentioned, right? The proximity to downtown and government buildings. So, we would, we would look to not just replace those roads in kind. You'd wanna take that opportunity to add a multimodal accommodation such as this.
And Pine Street, maybe some of the others as well.
Same thing, yes, yeah. Those roads, because it's gonna, it'll require likely, there's no drainage infrastructure in a lot of cases, so there may be drainage considerations. You're adding a curb and a gutter now, so those are things that, just add a sidewalk, it's not that simple.
But I, I think that makes a lot of sense, though. We got, and those are some of, I mean, I do walk downtown, and I lost my wife in one of the holes on Fremont Street. But I think the streets that you're talking about, a lot of traffic, a lot of pedestrian traffic, and that would be, and a lot of population, a lot of, a lot of people live in that area. So, that would be nice if we could coincide that with this grant and, you know, use some of our own money to do that. But, but thank you. I think this is, this is good.
And to add to Jared's response to the Chairman's question, that's why we have forty-eight projects on the list, so that, you know, you have plenty to choose from as, as time goes on, that you don't have to keep, you know, redoing the list. You've got a lot of projects to look at that we've determined, you know, are eligible for this. And that's what Mast dot approves the, the list, you know, it's that these projects are eligible. And I think Mast dot used to require only twenty projects. So, I mean, by coming up with forty-eight now, that, that gives you something to look forward to and help plan for the future.
Is there information on your website about the Complete Streets and Shared Streets?
If there is, it needs to be updated. And we were kind of going, embarking on this process to update that plan before we published any, you know, new, new additional information. But there would be, there should be a landing page for this effort, I think, you know, whether it's just Complete Streets or Shared Streets, all of that are, are efforts under those programs. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. I, I like the top five streets that you listed and the reasons why you listed them in regards to, you know, connecting to Main Street and just more intermodal transportation. But I'd also be curious to see, you know, what else is on that list. You had mentioned forty-eight projects. So, you know, just being able to hop online real quick and scroll through that would be, would be awesome and beneficial, just to see what the other projects are.
Sure. The, the state has their database, and I guess you could all database, but G I S map too for the whole state to show what tier, community.
too, for the whole state, to show what tier communities have achieved. I think there's over 250. When it first started, it was far less competitive, this program, but now there's over 250, I think, communities that are tier-three eligible, so it makes it more competitive. But I think you can even, there might be links, John, correct me if I'm wrong, that you can access some of that information as well. But it's much easier if we put it on our webpage, so I'd be happy to do that.
If you went to their website now, you'd see your old prioritization plan.
That's right.
So then just once we submit the new one and they approve it, then it'll get updated with the new prioritization plan. That'll be right on MassDOT's website as well.
Yeah, and we could, we could provide a link and more information on our webpage, certainly, when that, when that's approved.
And the goal of the presentation tonight is just to start moving forward with the new updated project list, and you're not looking for anything from the board this evening, correct?
That's right. No vote. It's purely informational. It's a requirement as part of the prioritization plan development, is a public outreach component. And, and we're just looking to garner any feedback, like we said, about our prioritization plan, the top five projects, because we are trying to hit that March 1st deadline. So if there was any sort of opinion, you know, which project, you know, we should, we should shoot for. But we feel, again, that the Church Street project, as far as Shared Streets go, is the most, you know, best candidate at this point. So, yep, but purely informational.
Thank you. I'm glad we could accommodate you before March 1st deadline.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
So we should get the money sometime in July, you're telling us?
Crossed, yeah.
I'm marking that down right now, July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. So the next item on the agenda this evening is Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month Declaration and Proclamation. So I think we're going to have a presentation first from Deb Lamarche and Kelly Twombly in regards to Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month.
Hi. Thank you for letting us come and before you, and give you just a little bit of information about it. And we have a fact sheet up here, which just, just gives you a, an overall about what the disease is all about. And we were hoping that for your consideration to give us this and make it March Awareness Month, it would just call attention to the disease itself and, and the steps that they're taking to try to find cures or to try to find new research to diagnose it, and then other medicines to help people with the symptoms, because there aren't too many medicines out there. But in the 20 years that I've, since I've had it, they've come up with so many new things, and, and the research is so important to all of us, and that's why we wanted to make it aware. And I, I think one of the biggest misconceptions of MS is that, you know I have it, you see me sitting in here, and I'm not shy about it. Kelly does not have it, but she could. And she could look just like this and run around and, and do, live a normal life, and you would not know that she had it, but she does. So when you pack it, I gave you just this picture of the nerve, just because I wanted to show you that this, this is what happens, the MS, the, I'm sorry, the, the body attacks itself, the immune system attacks itself, and it causes the nerve damage, the myelin sheath is destroyed. And so the message doesn't get to, from the brain to where it needs to go, and that's why I look like I do, because I have scars, tissues, and the message doesn't get there. Kelly could have it, and her nerve wasn't as damaged as mine was, so yeah, so it repaired itself, and now she's okay. That's the different types, four different types. She had a different type, and I, I have this type. But people don't get that, and that's why we wanted to call awareness to it, that I'm the face of it, she could be the face of it. It's all different faces, and we just wanted to make people aware of it, so that they have the, a little bit of the understanding. If you see, oh, we brought you some orange ribbons. Orange is the color for MS. And...
Can I push the board to give you the ID card?
Absolutely.
So that's all I wanted to say, was it took, and when I had, was diagnosed, it took three long years to diagnose me. Now they have better ways with all the research that they've done, which is so important again. Now people are diagnosed much, much quicker than they were before, and they don't put you through what they did years ago with, with me. So anyways, that's what I wanted to show you, was what the nerve looks like, how damaged it is, and then the picture of the different parts of the body that it does affect. So if anybody asks you any questions about it, we can call the National Multiple Sclerosis Society. They do a lot of work for a lot of people, and we thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions? So I would make a motion that the board declare March Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month in the town of Oxford.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three in affirmative, two absent. The board is also going to be presenting this evening a proclamation for the town, from the town of Oxford. The proclamation reads, "Whereas nearly 1 million people in the United States are living with multiple sclerosis, a chronic disabling disease of the central nervous system from which there is no cure, and whereas MS is at least two to three times more common in women than in men, and is typically diagnosed when individuals are in the prime of their lives between the ages of 20 and 50. And whereas MS can cause many symptoms, including blurred vision, loss of balance, poor coordination, slurred speech, tremors, numbness, extreme fatigue, problems with memory and concentration, paralysis, depression, and more. And whereas, due to these symptoms and progression of the disease, people with MS, their families, caregivers, employers, and the entire healthcare system carry substantial clinical and economic burdens over a period of many years. And whereas, loss productivity related to loss of employment or the need to retire early due to disease progression may be the largest single factor that contributes to the non-medical, financial, familial, and societal costs of MS. And whereas, early and appropriate treatment, including the use, use of disease-modifying therapies, can markedly reduce disease activity and accumulation of disability, potentially allowing patients to have a more active and independent lifestyle. And now therefore, be it resolved that we, the town manager and the board of selectmen, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month in the town of Oxford, to increase awareness of this disabling disease and support people living with multiple sclerosis. The proclamation is given under our hands the 16th day of February 2022, signed by the town manager, Jennifer Callahan, Michael Daniels, the chairman, Norman LeBlanc, secretary, and Dennis Lamarche, selectmen. Oxford Board of Selectmen, so.
We thank you very much.
Thank you. Young man, if you'll join me down here, we'll present that and draw a picture.
Oh, can we take the mask?
Yes.
We can.
So I think we'll go...
I guess that means I'm taking a picture?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, can we go up against the wall over here for the picture?
Yeah.
You got that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you so much.
And then everything you said, there was everything, there was, and it was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda this evening is donation acceptance of $1,500 from Aquarian Water to the Oxford Community Center. The town manager had mentioned in her town manager's report, last meeting, I believe it was, or the meeting before, that Aquarian Water made a donation of $1,500 to the Oxford Community Center to help fund the cost of the ice skating rink at Jocelyn Park. The Oxford Community Center director asked that the board accept this donation, and I believe I read as of yesterday or today that the ice rink is now open. Skate at your own risk and be safe out there, but have fun. So I would make a motion that the board accept the donation to the Oxford Community Center from Aquarian Water for $1,500 in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three in affirmative, two absent. The next item on the agenda is to enter into executive session. I will make a motion to go into...
Chairman, if I may, just before you go into executive session. With the building being still open to the public, you have the option of either recessing until 7:00 and having it in this room, or you can go to the first-floor conference room. But I think you just should state, if you're going to change locations, that you're changing locations.
Okay. Thank you. Were we able to get the downstairs room set up for this evening, or would it be best to recess?
I did not. Put extra chairs in there, but I can't read quickly.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work to do that. Yeah. Yes. So we will be entering into executive session and moving to the smaller conference room on the first floor of the Down Hall. So I will make a motion to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A 7 and A2. Purpose 7 is to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, open meeting law, to review for approval and consideration of release of executive session minutes from the following executive session dates, December 21, 2021, and January 11, 2022. And purpose number two, to conduct strategies, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non- use, excuse me, non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town, the town manager, Jennifer Callahan, for the sole purpose of review for approval and consideration of release of the executive session minutes from December 4, 2020, August 31, 2021, December 7, 2021, December 21, 2021, and January 11, 2022, and to only come out of the purpose, for the purpose of adjournment. Look for a second.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three in affirmative, two absent. We are entering into executive session.